Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This public hearing sponsored by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary is hereby convened. To my immediate right is Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, a member of the committee. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker, for joining us this evening. And to my immediate left is Senator Tom Ada, who is the Chairman of the Guam Veterans Committee and also the Vice Chair of this particular committee. So, thank you very much, Senator Tom, for joining us. I understand some of the other senators will be joining us very shortly. Ladies and gentlemen, we have one particular item that is scheduled for the agenda, and that is Resolution 111-33. And this has been -- was initially filed on the 22nd of May. And I want to, as Chair and a sponsor of this -- actually, as sponsor of this legislation, I would like to thank our media partners for sharing the information that's contained in here and also being very vocal and open in terms of some of the activities taking place with services being provided to our veteran community. So, I want to start off with that. This resolution, Resolution Number 111-33-COR, is relative to requesting Guam's delegate to the Congress of the United States to call for an investigation from the Veterans Affairs Office of Inspector General to substantiate allegations into access barriers adversely affecting the quality of primary and specialty care and mismanagement at the Veterans Affairs Guam Community-Based Operation Clinic and the Guam Vet Center. Since the introduction of this particular resolution, there was additional information that was provided to myself, and I believe it was shared with the Chair of the Veterans Affairs Committee, with regards to SEBAC, that at that time, there was a physician, a primary physician, that was departing the Veterans Clinic as of the end of May. But shortly thereafter, the 1st of June, there was a replacement physician specifically for the Veterans Clinic that was to commence that individual's responsibility on the 1st of June. In conjunction with that, additional information that was provided to myself and was shared with members of the legislature was that there was an additional physician that was hired specifically for the community outreach program. And that is a community outreach program that is the additional services being provided by the SEBAC, as it applies to the use of the public health centers in the north, Mondays and Tuesdays, and then in the south, Wednesdays and Thursdays, or Thursdays and Fridays, one of the two other days. So, that was the information that was received. Also, in addition to that information that was provided to myself, there were additional information that as of October of last year, there were six nurses onboard at SEBAC, the Community-Based Operation Clinic. As of the date of notification of current information in the latter part of May, there were six additional nurses that were already brought onboard, and then three additional nurses that were going to be brought in during the course of the summer. So, that would add to a total of 15 nurses. And as a precursor to this particular resolution, I am sharing that information not only with the public, but with everyone in the audience and our veterans community, because I want to ensure that the information that is disseminated by myself or the Chairman of the Veterans Affairs Committee or any member of this legislature, if, in fact, it originates from me by virtue of this resolution, I want to make sure that I'm open and transparent and current with the information that is being provided, and that reflects what is taking place at our Veterans Clinic. I want to also say this much, with many of our veterans who have shared concerns since the introduction of this particular resolution, I want to thank you all very much for reaching out to my office and sharing not only your concerns, but also sharing some positive things that are taking place in terms of benefits being provided to our veteran community as well as medical treatment services that are being provided. This resolution, and I want to recognize the two co-sponsors, Senator Tom Ada and Senator Tommy Morrison, thank you very much, senators, for co-sponsoring this resolution. If, at the very least, this resolution is endorsed and welcomed by the SEBAC and the Veterans Administration Office, the VBO, in Tizan, if, at the very least, we would have, should this resolution be accepted and welcomed, we would have at least the Inspector General to conduct an assessment of all the services and the resources that are being made available for our veterans here in Guam and a number of our veterans who receive treatment on Guam, who are either from CNMI or the Micronesian region. So, if, at the very least, this proceeds and we get the cooperation of the Congresswoman and an investigation is conducted, then at least the resources that are being made available to the community of Guam and the veterans community here in Guam, as well as the Micronesian and Marianas region, that at least we can know and our veterans can acknowledge that, that, in fact, either we're getting the level of services that is being provided equally across the nation, or, in this case, with many of the challenges that some of our veterans experience, we perhaps are being short-changed. And if, in fact, this investigation produces information that we may be short-changed with the level of services, then at least it would reinforce many of the requests by our veteran community that, in fact, we get what our veterans have rightfully earned, and that is with the medical, as well as the benefits that they have earned by virtue of donning the uniform. Aside from that, I want to recognize Senator Mary Torres. Thank you very much, Senator, for joining us this evening, and Senator Tommy Morrison. Thank you, Senator, for joining us. And aside from that, I think I've said enough with regards to the resolution and some of the additional information that I wanted to impart before we begin the receiving testimony on this particular resolution. I would like to invite the following individuals, please to join us up front, Mr. Tom Devlin, Mr. Leslie Santos, or Sir Nicholas, I apologize, Leslie, Anthony Kanga, Daniel Perez, and Ricardo Cruz. Once again, if I can invite the following individuals, Tom Devlin, Leslie S. Nicholas, Anthony Kanga, Daniel Perez, and Ricardo Cruz. To the audience, because of the number of individuals that have signed up to provide testimony, I'm going to request that, in fact, our comments be limited to no more than five minutes. Okay? So, I believe that that would be ample time for us to express our concerns, and then if, by any chance, you would like to close out on your presentation, I will allow you after we go through the first round of individuals that are providing testimony. Mr. Devlin, if you would like to, please identify yourself for the record and proceed with your testimony, Resolution 111-3.
Good evening, senators. Good evening, everyone, fellow veterans. My name is Tom Devlin. I'm the producer of K-57 Vet Talk radio show, and I'm also, as of now, the Vice Commander of one of the chapters of the military out of Purple Heart. I got called up here first. I didn't realize that I was going to be called up first. To be honest with you, I put my name sort of at the bottom to listen to what everybody else had to say. But since you called me up first, I agree with the resolution. Well, I have a lot of friends in a lot of places, I guess. But I agree with the resolution. But before I say that, I've been in the VA system since 1969, when I came out of Vietnam. I personally have never had a problem with the VA system, with the medical end of it, with the GI benefits, educational benefits, home loan benefits. But when one veteran has a problem with the system, we all have a problem with the system. And I've seen the system improved on Guam, let's say about eight years ago. And somehow, the system has gone down in certain areas with the clinic. We had a meeting with the Congresswoman in her office, and a lot of words have been dabbled about, about the expansion of the clinic. Well, to find out that the expansion of the clinic is not a set deal, it's not a go. The island of Guam is maybe 90th on the waiting list. That doesn't mean it won't happen, but that doesn't mean it will happen. So, the idea is if you expand a clinic and you don't have the amount of doctors for the clinic, why expand the clinic? There's also talk from different individuals about a veterans' hospital. If the Veteran Administration can't expand the clinic or can't get doctors on the island of Guam in a reasonable fashion, there's no way you're going to be able to see a veterans' hospital. And where are the veterans' numbers are? What are the numbers? We have a lot of fluctuation with numbers. But also, when it comes to, let's say, clinics and issues like that, I have something for the senators. Those senators that are here and those senators that are not here, that I'd like to hand out. And this is basically a report, and it's a quarterly report of what goes on in the veterans' system, how sometimes doctors get arrested for drug use, how various employees do various things, and how veterans abuse the system. And I think it's time that, on Guam, we find out what's going on in SEBAC, the good, the bad, what has to be improved, what has gone well. The veterans have a right to know, the elected leaders on this island have a right to know, and our Congresswoman, in my opinion, has not done a very good job in the last few years with that. And I told her that to her face, and a lot of those members that are on the council said the same thing in her office, that they felt that she wasn't doing what was necessary for the veterans on the island of Guam. It was a heated conversation. These veterans were not, let's say, ticked off. They were mad. They were mad because there are younger veterans out there that have served in Afghanistan. There are military people going back to Iraq as we speak. Millions of dollars are going to be spent, all over again, going back to Iraq to train soldiers that were supposedly trained 10 years ago. But when these individuals come back to this island or into the states, what do they get? Do they get the promises that they got when they enlisted? Many cases, no. The Guam SEBAC, they have a shortage of personnel. Are these doctors long-term doctors or temporary assignment doctors? If you had the nurses, that's fine, but a nurse can't give you an injection or order of prescriptions for you. You have to call Hawaii. I've called Hawaii. To be told in Hawaii that you don't no longer have to call Hawaii, the doctor on Guam is notified automatically when your prescription has to be refilled, but yet the veterans are told they have to call the pharmacy in Hawaii and they have to talk to a pharmacist. When the veterans call Hawaii, they don't talk to a pharmacist, they talk to a clerk, because you can't get a pharmacist. They're too busy doing something else. So, somehow, we need somebody to come neutral, to come to Guam and find out what is wrong with the system, how the system can be improved. And also, if you go to the federal side, the veterans' website, there's a 90-page report. It's a quarterly report, it's a 90-page report. I have it right here. I read it today. It tells you about how the Inspector General's inspecting a lot of hospitals, a lot of clinics, and it's a quarterly report. Now, I've been doing this for many, many years. I haven't seen Guam on any page. And I think it's time that elected leaders, especially that represent the federal side, figure out why Guam seems to be exempt from a lot of things. The choice program. Why wasn't Guam on the original choice program? Veterans are getting choice cards, but Guam was not on the choice program. Who on the federal side is responsible for this? Why wasn't Guam put on that choice program, just like everybody else, the other 50 states? What happened? What's wrong? What's the accountability here? The younger veterans are just, they're just, they're beyond mad. Someone has let them down, and it's up to the older veterans, the Vietnam veterans, the Korean War veterans, to speak up for these young people. They served. They constantly served. They get activated, reactivated. It's almost like a circus. And they're coming from a small island, and when they get hurt or when they sacrifice their lives, their lives are just as much valuable as the lives in the states, regardless of the color of their skin, regardless of the service that they served in, whether they were drafted, whether they -- it doesn't matter. But when they come here, back to Guam, they figure they're not getting the same deal. The veterans, when they're discharged from United States Military, get unemployment insurance in the 50 states. Do they get unemployment insurance on Guam? No. But yet, every military member has unemployment insurance deducted from their salary. Where does that money go? What slush fund does it go into? Because on Guam, if you enlist in the military and you come back to Guam to live, you don't get unemployment insurance. It happened for National Guard troops, but only, what, 600 or 700 of them? But if, let's say, myself, I go and I enlist in United States Navy for five years, and I come back and I reside on Guam, I don't get unemployment insurance on Guam, but yet they deduct it out of my salary. There's something wrong with the system, there's something wrong. Our legal responsibility is to tell the senators, to tell the Congresswoman, and you've got to scream and holler. And the veterans out here, they don't want to hear you don't have the money. They don't want to hear that. You can say you don't have the money, they're not listening to you anymore. It seems to be a lot of money going around when it needs to be. You can hear the hush in the room. Some of these veterans don't want to come up to this table. I've talked to many of them. They don't want to come up to the table and testify because they're, they don't want their emotion to take control. So, I wish you the best of luck, but I think you're going to have to get tough with yourselves and tough with the Congresswoman to find out what's going on and be fair. Generally, it's not the employees, the problem, it's the system. The system is letting the veterans down, and the only way we can change it is we have to go to elected leaders to fight the system. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Devlin, and my virtue of your outreach program, K-57 Veterans Vet Talk, you certainly continue to provide much information to our veterans community, and it's appreciated from this end. So, thank you again, Mr. Devlin. Mr. S. Nicholas, you can identify yourself for the record and please proceed.
My name's Leslie S. Nicholas. I always just got seen today at the SEBAC after trying to get an appointment for a while, and I saw Dr. Willan Marzillo. He came in from Fort Bliss, Texas. And I was telling him about, you know, I hope he stays longer than the last doctor I saw in February, which I saw for about almost an hour, and he got all the details of my medical conditions. And then, when I tried to do a follow-up, he was gone in less than a month. So, you know, I take pain narcotics for my back and my lower back, and they don't give me, they just go ahead and prescribe the medication to me without seeing a doctor, which is a no-no. But, you know, these are the things that happen, and somebody's got to sign it. So, for the last five months, I have not seen a doctor, and they keep prescribing me my pain meds. And I don't have a problem. When I ask for something, they give it to me. The only problem we have is that, you know, I go in and there's new nurses, yes, there's new nurses, and last month, there's only one doctor. So, what is the use of having nurses if you don't have doctors? And a lot of it has to do with, how long are these doctors going to stay? According to Dr. Willan Marzillo today, through our conversation, he said he signed a three-year contract, and that's the only way for him to stay, sign a three-year contract. So, what about the other doctors? I don't know how many we have onboard now, but I saw a couple today. I think they're doctors at SEBAC. But my main concern is just having to follow up to the doctors after you've seen them and they're not around again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. S. Nicholas, for your testimony this evening. Mr. Kanga?
Hafedais and respecto, senators. My name is Anthony Demian Kanga. I wasn't actually expecting to be speaking, but here I am. You know, I'm an optimist, and I believe that, as a former military officer in the United States Air Force, we can gain by working together, and that's what we have to do. Senator Augen, you know as well as I do that the Inspector General investigations and things like that, sometimes is much needed. We know that, and that keeps everybody in check. And that's what we want to do, is we just want to work together. I believe in teamwork amongst everybody. You know, here's the thing, people, we're the higher primates. Right here in this room, we are the higher primates. So, we too are catering to the other veterans out there, and we also got to, we got to help each other, you know? I went through some things too recently, but you know what? We can't fight about it. We can't point fingers. You know what I'm saying? We have to work together. That's what I want to leave with everybody. Always remember, we are the higher primates, and let God do his work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kanga. Mr. Perez?
Good afternoon, honorable senators. My name is Daniel Perez, Commander, President of the Baragada Veterans Organization, lifetime member of the Vietnam Veterans of America, lifetime member of Veterans of Foreign Wars post-1509, and a member of the Air Force Veterans Association. What I'd like to say that is, it relates a lot to this public hearing, is that it's not mandatory, and it's not an obligation, for senators to attend public hearings. There's only five of you. The voters of Guam, elected 15. It is not a standing rule, like the bills on legislative sessions, that there be excuse. It's really voluntary for senators to attend public hearings. If a senator is not present here, we can evaluate the integrity and the credibility of senators on every public hearing in the past, right now, and in the future. I came here freely and voluntarily to testify on Resolution 111-33-COR. I am not in favor of this resolution. How did this committee arrive at allegations into access barriers adversely affecting the quality of primary and specialty care and mismanagement at Veterans Affairs SEBAC? The word "access" true meaning of admission, entrance, attack, and liberty to approach or means of approach. The word "barriers" true meaning is offense, obstruction, or any obstacle. Mismanagement, the true meaning of "mis," M-I-S, meaning amiss, wrongly or mixed compounds. Management's true meaning are carry-on, conduct, succeed in doing, handle, and conduct affairs. None of these problems of access barriers or mismanagement existed at SEBAC. I have personally experienced for several years the performances of outstanding high-quality primary and specialty healthcare services with Guam SEBAC, Tripler Army Hospital, and Queen's Hospital in Honolulu, especially and extensively within the last four years, 2011, '12, '13, and '14, in accordance with U.S. Veterans Affairs commitments. The serious concerns that we U.S. veterans on Guam that have used SEBAC for so many years continue to speak up to U.S. Veterans Affairs that the system problems needs to be addressed. Veterans Affairs Honolulu, the responsible management for SEBAC Guam, is aware of these problems and has made a lot of improvements of better communications. That's all. Frequent turnovers of doctors and nurses at SEBAC has become a serious disappointment for veterans. A lot of these VA system deficiencies contribute to much lower salaries for doctors and nurses. For several years of advertisement on vacancies through the electronic procedures for recruitment of doctors and nurses does not offer any special attraction to fill these vacancies. Once vacancies are filled, the contracts for doctors are just for a few months. I experienced that. Ten doctors in a period of three years, ten different doctors. Once they leave, the availability of healthcare services are limited. It is not a mismanagement problem. Again, this is a system problem. Higher salary pay grades for Guam VA doctors needs to be addressed by the federal government. There are other options or solutions to the system problems, but it may not be economical for U.S. Veterans Affairs, including the disbursements of medicine to veterans. Extensive training to customer service at SEBAC is a must. The assignment of a medical doctor to oversee the administration of SEBAC is not the right thing to do. That is, taking away the full-time commitment of the doctor to perform extensive primary healthcare services to veterans. U.S. Veterans Affairs need to create and justify a position for an executive management administrator to oversee the entire operation with other duties and responsibilities. Again, this may not be economical for U.S. Veterans Affairs, but it will certainly contribute to the improvement of the VA system problem. This is Usamasi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perez, for your testimony this evening, and also for highlighting some recommended considerations on the part of SEBAC in terms of retaining medical physicians. Mr. Cruz?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and committee members, senators, and veterans that are present here in the hall this evening. I thank you for being here this evening. I have not prepared a written statement to the issue. However, I agree with this resolution based on the fact that what we are talking about is here locally, not federally, and as the resolution states, we are asking higher-ups to be involved with our concern locally, because locally, we cannot, as is stated with the testimony provided by this gentleman up here with me, it's obviously visual that we do have a problem, and we agree on that here locally. I'll make a long story short. On my case, I came back to the islands in February, and I have tried to make an appointment with SEBAC to see a mentor, my mentor provider, for a follow-up after not seeing the provider for a period of six months. I needed help. I needed urgent help. I recognize that personally, and it was not until 30 days later, upon my request, that I was granted the opportunity to visit with my mentor provider. However, I stress the fact that I am a threat to community, and that was when I was taken I know that I speak for a lot of veterans in that case, in that situation. I do know that. It's just that our people are very reserved, are very proud, and they feel that they have served their country. It's the reason why they stand, not to be noticed and not to be heard. But I, for one, cannot sit on my duff to let matters go locally, and I strongly endorse this resolution on the fact basis, on the fact that I stand. I have two veteran sons that have served in Iraq and Iran, and had photos, and I wish I'd taken them with me this evening. One of my sons was photographed in Iraq with the Congresswoman, and I would have held that photo up and have you all witness that, in fact, it happened in Iraq underneath a tent. Or my son was Or my son was having lunch with the Congresswoman. I would have asked the audience, what would that photo mean to you, just looking at it? Mind you, it was taken in Iraq. But, again, the saying goes, if a picture paints a thousand words, I didn't think you can come up with a dozen words to describe my feeling of that photograph. That photograph to me was taken for a political reason. Political reason, that was the former governor that visited Vietnam in my time. I did not see the former governor up in the DMZ where I was at. He visited soldiers down in the southern part of Vietnam, not in the, not up in the demilitarized zone. There was no media available up where I was at during Vietnam. And to see the Congresswoman standing over my son, doing war, fully dressed, pretty as she is, that's all that I could see through the picture. Because up to this point, I am here tonight to push for the benefits that they earned also. Forget me, forget me. I have just a few years more, more so, but my sons is in their mid-thirties. How long are they gonna live? One of my sons has been on the front lines, downrange is the army term, downrange, four times in four years. He has yet to see a mental provider, but I know that he suffers the same way I do. He's only proud, so proud, though he's an army guy, he tries to emulate a marine father, mind you. He tries to emulate a marine, and it will never happen, I tend, that the audience can agree with me just on the level of their experience and my experience. Gentlemen, please, do not hold back to fight and to request and to urge the senators to push forward with this resolution because, because it is late, it is way overdue. Senators, please, push forward, and I will be here present if time that the Congresswoman would be in the same room with me in this hall. And I will make that photo available to ask her personally, what was the intent or what is the purpose of that photograph taken during combat? Because nothing has been done to the veterans, not so much. We can agree that we all heard hearsay about how many, how many doctors and what the intermediate level of management is doing for, on our behalf. It is not middle management, ladies and gentlemen, is down in Congress. My pushback in 1996 with the late Commander Jack Semissel on a town hall meeting held at Hilton in 1996 was proposing to come up with a number of veterans that are in Guam. We suggested, the commander and I suggested, that elected officials go out to the villages, to the regions, to the sectors, however you want to call it, to vote for the, for the local votes. Same thing with the mayors as well, the governors. They all walked a path during election time to get votes. That was one suggestion. Each individual senator, as much as they can, tally up veterans in their community. The other was that the retired Brigadier General, Agitant General for the National Guard approached myself and three other Command Sergeant Majors who were having breakfast in Kings one morning, asking for a suggestion, our help, how to possibly come up with a close proximity of the total number of veterans in Guam. We suggested that on the weekend drills for the National Guard, he post, or he task, at least a platoon, at least a platoon for each village to survey how many veterans are in the village. 1996, ladies and gentlemen, to this day, we don't have numbers. The closest number we have are just maybe numbers that are actively serving for the National Guard. Pathetic. Pathetic. I am sitting here with my counterparts on the table as well, veterans, wounded veterans, mind you, in this room as well. We have lost close friends, relatives, brothers, parents. We've lost them in the war. But in my life, it's not gonna happen with my sons, because I will not allow for them to go to the same deal, the treatment that I am going through now. I imagine, I literally threaten Cebok to be seen for my condition. On, on the other side of the house, my primary care provider, I've seen my primary care provider once since then also, only to find out last week that I am scheduled to see another replacement doctor by the name of Dr. Lee. I spoke with Dr. Lee today, and he's told me there's only been here for about a few weeks. He cannot continue my treatment, being my care provider, because he is here temporarily, as you have heard on the previous testimony provided. Totally unsat. Senators, Mr. Chairman, please, for our current members, veterans, Senator Ada, sir, I salute you as well. You wore the uniform. You did wear it. We know your status. Please, be on the right hand of Senator Ogden and push forward. Senator Cruz, Senator Morrison, and Senator Torres, please, support Senator Ogden in his endeavor. Locally, we can't do nothing, as was said previously. That is why we need the Congresswoman. We need the governor as well, ladies and gentlemen. More so, more so, we need numbers to show our strength. I invite all the veterans organizations to come up and try to entice, invite their members, whenever we have veterans issues, to push forward. A statement on the mission of the military order, the Purple Heart, is to support legislative initiatives for all veterans and families. That is a mission statement for military order, the Purple Heart. Please, if anything, help us in our endeavor, in our mission, to support legislative initiative. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Senators, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cruz, for your testimony this evening, and also sharing with us that this is an endeavor that is, is continuing in nature. It's not only to address the services and the medical treatment and the benefits for our veterans today, but also for our veterans who may need it after they retire. So, thank you for sharing your perspective. And also to everyone on the panel, thank you very much for having served our country in uniform. Senators, do you have any questions or comments? If not, appreciate your testimony this evening. If I can invite the following individuals, please, to join us up front. Mr. Raymond Bazza, Juan Fenonja, Alfred Zaragoza. I take it, Mr. Stali, you're here observing? Okay. I have Don Dory observing, Beverly Day Dory. If I can invite those individuals, Raymond Bazza, Juan Fenonja, Alfred Zaragoza, and Mr. Dan Minjola. Mr. Bazza, please, if you can identify yourself for the record and proceed with your comments testimony.
Good afternoon, senators and chairman. My name is Raymond de Bazza. I'm the past commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of 1509. I'm here in support of the resolution that's gonna be mentioned today, and I'm also in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bazza, for your testimony this evening. Mr. Fenonja?
My name is Juan Fenonja. I'm a disabled Vietnam veteran. I am somewhat in favor with the bill, but not in favor of addressing the delegate of Congress, Marilyn Bernalio, because I do not want to attend another town hall meeting. The purpose of your resolution on your bill, Senator, is to approach the investigation as soon as possible, and as truthfully and honest as possible. Now, we don't want to go back having a town hall meeting in order to pursue your bill. All right? I've attended abundance of town hall meetings from Marilyn Bernalio, and the promises she made, she only accomplished a quarter of all the promises. Okay? Time frame. Let me give you my example. I came back to Guam in June 2013. I requested to see a primary doctor on November 2013. I was called upon on February 2014. I met a doctor 2000 March, 2014, on March, for my thyroid. Now, today, I asked the lady for an annual physical. Looked up my name on the computer and said, "Mr. Fenonja, you just seen a doctor in March." I said, "Okay. So, is that my annual physical?" She says, "Yes. You mean to tell me that having blood work for my thyroid is my annual physical?" "Yes, that's how we do annual physical." I said, "But what's gonna happen to my lungs, my kidney, my liver, and my MRI for my lower back that I've been suffering since I was in Vietnam?" "Oh, we don't do annual physicals like that. We only take blood work. That is the annual." So, I'm due for next year, another blood work for my annual physical. Now, I don't think that's annual physical for a veteran. Another thing, we just got back, I addressed the panel on December 2014 at the town hall meeting in Dedidong, pretending Camp VA. Why do we have to pay twenty percent of the cost of dialysis, cancer treatment, et cetera, et cetera? When back in California, VA hospital, my wife is hundred percent covered. She's hundred percent covered. No copayment necessary for cancer, dialysis, medication, eyeglasses, et cetera. Why do I have to pay again for Medicare to cover the cost here in Guam? Where are those concerns? I approached Marilyn Bernalio's office about this, and up to this day, they have not gotten So, that's my personal identification of the delegate. I don't want to go to town hall meetings again for the purpose of this bill. I'm in favor of your bill, but I'm not in favor of having the Congresswoman again delay the process. Should anyone, I would like to suggest that the newly appointed director for the local VA office, Mr. Manglonja, the director at Tijan, be your sole spokesperson in Congress to pursue what you're trying to create. But we do have a problem up at that clinic. That I can guarantee, and I will witness, that we do have a problem out there. But the wording on your, on your bill, Senator, I'm for it, but the assigning of the Guam delegate, I'm against that. Thank you.
This is Usamasi, Mr. Fenonja. Thank you very much for your testimony this evening. Mr. Alfred, please, if I mispronounce your name, Zaragoza?
Correct.
Okay.
Hello. My name is Alfred Zaragoza. The senator had pronounced it right, and good afternoon, senators, and the members of the veterans, and guests. I did not expect to be on this table today. I just want to have to listen, but I have listened to a lot of facts about the Cebok. I myself had experienced difficulties on Cebok. I am a disabled veteran with a heart problem. I have to see a cardio doctor or heart doctors every six months because I have an implant that they have to, to evaluate six months all the time. In the process of investigating my implants, the doctor needs an echocardiogram. About July last year, I have seen a newly replaced doctor, and she had said that she will assign me a doctor to give me an echocardiogram, and they said, "Just wait, they'll call you." I had been waiting and waiting until it's time for me to see my evaluation of my implants, which is defibrillator, heart defibrillator. So, I seen that doctor evaluate my heart defibrillator. She said, "It's okay at this time, but next time I see you, I need your echocardiogram to fully evaluate my condition." At that time, it's time for me to see again my doctor, which is, she wants me to see her only every six months. I see the same doctor on February, and I told her, "I have not had the cardiogram that you had promised that you're gonna schedule me for." I said, "Oh, I did that, but nobody had called me." I told her. I said, "Okay, I'm gonna reschedule you again." Up until now, that was since February, up until now, I don't have, nobody calling me for a cardiogram. My wife has been busy calling places to see if anybody had requested echocardiogram for me, but nobody said they don't, they have any. I agree with the, with the resolution, and this, this is just, enforce the problem that I have heard on this room earlier, and will also help me find out what is the problem in the Cebok. Why can I get the echocardiogram? Thank you very much, senators.
Thank you, Mr. Zaragoza, for joining us this evening and presenting your testimony. Mr. Minjola?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Senator Ogden, Senator Ada, rest of the senators, fellow veterans. It's kind of quite surprising to be up here talking to a bunch of people. One thing for sure, it looks like we are a handful here tonight, which is always the desired outcome for the hearing. How many times do we veterans, in our own free time, will look at the TV and say, "Well, let's see how many senators were present for the veterans' hearing." And as somebody said earlier, there's five senators tonight. Although there's an unwavering order to have all senators here tonight, we, we can certainly see the interests of the veterans that are here, I mean, the senators that are here To say that I am with the investigation or in favor of that, not entirely. I think, I think it's a good idea, but we have to all think about what we're doing here when we're requesting for a top- But we have to all think about what we're doing here when we're requesting for a top-level Non-commissioned officers, sergeant majors, captains, officers that are in charge, well, you're in the military. We were taught one thing. If we have a problem, we're going to take care of it before it gets higher, higher up. I don't want to send the message all the way up to Washington, D.C., and then for people to come here and look at the problem, what we've got, and they're going to say, "Look at all the people around you that could have done something." I had a VVA meeting the other day, and I just kind of asked, "How many of you guys, how many of my members have problem with their pharmacy online calling in?" Five of them raised their hand. There was about 40 people in the meeting. But irregardless, again, like somebody said here, if there was one veteran that's complaining, then we do have a problem. How we tackle that problem is up to the leaders. For example, I'm the president of the Vietnam Veterans of America. For me to say that I need to move forward to address this problem up to the highest level is not inconsistent with my leadership ability. What I'm taught is, I need to get those five people, and I need to set them down, and I need to talk to them. What happened? It could be just a matter of the way they're dialing the numbers. They could be shaking. You know, veterans, sometimes they get the shakes. And on top of that, I am with the naval hospital system. Sometimes I punch the wrong number, and the end of the line will tell me, "I'm sorry, you ain't got no more refills." Then I said, "I got two more left." Well, what happened? Was I punching the wrong number? Okay? So is that a problem of the higher up? No, it's not. We have to look at ourselves when we say we have a problem. And what we're trying to tell the world, what is the problem? And I don't want the world to look down and say, "Those guys don't know what they're doing. They don't even know how to punch in a number on the telephone. That's why they're not getting what they need." But for all practical purposes, we do have a problem here. But I'd like to call on all the leaders, all the presidents of the organization, to take care of your people. Be one-to-one on them, on some of their problems. And when we do that, what happens is, we mitigate some of the problems that's going to be generated later on. For us to change the online pharmacy procedure, I don't know if that's going to help my five people. If they change that system, maybe I messed up the rest of them, 35 of them. So we have to be very careful when we demand changes. Because the very change that you are asking could be fall, the 35 out of the 40 that are saying, "Hey, the system is okay." Now, veterans count, that's another problem that we have, and we've been hammering this veterans count since day one. Truth to the matter is, we have three particular population counts out there. We have 27,000, we have 8,000, and we have 2,800 or 3,000. Which one counts towards getting a better medical facility here in Guam and/or a bigger clinic? Or leading up to a hospital? Which one are the higher on up, the congresspeople looking at, which count is the one that counts? According to some of the administrators that I have talked to, the 2,800 veterans count that are using the C-Box equates to the 7,000 or 8,000 number that we have, and they are being utilized accordingly on a percentage matter. Because when you look, when they've made a survey in the states, that throughout the country in any region, 32, 30 to 32% of the population utilizes C-Box or the medical facility out of a veterans' count. So to me, that seems to be working. Maybe our problem is a procedure type. Like some of the veterans mentioned here, we were left out. We were left out. But we were always covered with being others whenever they come out with something. It's a matter of regulation or procedure. You know, we get to be like Alaska, all the way out there. And for some reason, they just kind of don't take it seriously to set a procedure for Guam. They bundle us up with the rest of the folks in the states that are out somewhere. So they're working because it affects the choice card. And again, that's another thing about the choice card. Veterans just can't go out there and see a doctor. We all got to face it. Money is what really is driving everything. If you go and see a doctor, and that doctor is not certified or part of the VA's system, you're going to end up paying. And it's not VA's fault. That is why we have to go through the C-Box, because then they direct you to where you should go, so you won't have any problem. Okay? I think I've taken my five minutes up. I know that probably not too popular with the rest of my veterans, but I just thought I want to put that in. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mendola, and gentlemen. Thank you very much for your service to our country and to our island community. Senators, any questions for the panel members? If not, thank you again, gentlemen. I'm going to call the individuals who have signed in, and if by any chance you're not going to present oral testimony, then by all means, just disregard that, please. Because I know perhaps a few of you in the audience signed in and had no intentions of providing oral testimony. We have Robson Augustine, Fernando Estevez, Enrique Augustine, Jimmy Panglinen, and Mr. Bill Kandif, and Marlene Slumka. Like I said, if your desire is not to provide oral testimony, then by all means, I acknowledge that. Once again, Mr. Robson Augustine, Fernando Estevez, Enrique Augustine, Jimmy Panglinen, Bill Kandif, and Marlene Slumka. Okay. Mr. Estevez, thank you, you're first.
Honorable senators and fellow veterans, Fernando Estevez, veteran of Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom. I'm of that new generation that older veterans and my forerunners speak about. I moved back home in 2014, and since being home, I was surprised that I've run into six Tramor Guamanians that I had served in, you know, in my tenure in the Army, which was surprising that they moved home. And it really brought to light the issues regarding benefits, primarily medical, that the veterans of the past and of the future are going to be facing. I do recall, I think the last statistic was, one out of every eight people on Guam enlist in the military, whether National Guard or active duty across the branches. That's a large issue. I mean, speaking of that, it's not so much an issue with the veterans themselves, it's an issue with the public, because one out of every eight is touching every single family, you know, throughout the community on the island. In terms of the resolution, I do agree with it, but like the gentleman said prior to, we do need to look within. Every veteran here, you know, who served in the executive branch knows the hard fight and red tape of the bureaucracy with the federal government. And if we don't have an accurate count, then we're going to be dead in the water, and we're going to look, we're not going to look very professional, and they're not going to take us serious in the future. So until we have all our ducks in a row, I would say, "Hold." You know, take a tactical pause, look at the situation. You know, I've heard there have been talks about this, you know, for a long time. You know, there's different numbers. They have this count, they have this count. Who's responsible for cross-referencing different counts? You know, if we're going to outreach to the veteran communities to capture numbers, who's cross-referencing that? Have people been counted twice? Have people passed away? You know, the government has so many systems in place to register people for anything, whether it's a vote at the village mayor's office for anything. How much is it going to cost to ask to check the block, "Are you a veteran?" You know? How much is it going to cost for a village mayor to send somebody to somebody's house and perhaps, you know, pick up a copy of Member 4, DD 214? Or cross-reference it on public knowledge? You know, these are all systems that are already in place that just takes somebody to sit down and do. You know, if somebody asks me to volunteer an hour a day to cross-reference veterans, I do it gladly. I don't think it's difficult. I don't think it's costly. But I think in finding that fundamental number that's going to get asked over and over again by the feds, we need to establish that before we move forward with anything. Because even if they did find problems, how are they going to ever establish funding or determine funding to fix them? You know? They're one big pocket, but they're very tight on how they distro that money. And if we can't provide any kind of numbers, we're just not going to be taken serious. You know, we're a professional, we're all professionals in our services in the military, the legislature, the executive branch, the whole government as a whole, in my 10 years of being, or 11 years of being away, has moved into a very professional organization I could be proud to call, you know, my local government. And I think in putting any kind of legislature forward or resolution, we need to make sure that we have all our information correct before we put ourselves, like the gentleman said before, in the limelight in front of the federal government. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Estevez. Mr. Augustine?
Thank you, Senators, fellow veterans. I am Enrique Augustine, combat veteran of Vietnam War. Our mission in the infantry is to close with and destroy the enemy. I am not proud to say that killing another human being in the name of political ideology is justifiable. I was only a teenager when this life-threatening, life-altering event took place, and it has haunted me for the last 50 years. For those of us who suffer from PTSD, or have loved ones with PTSD, commit suicide because of the lack of adequate care is a terrible thing. I have relatives and friends who have died as a result of their war experience. As a community with a high percentage of veterans, we have not done enough to take care of the veterans and their families. What we have done enough is to complain and continue to complain, and now move our complaint to the next higher level by going the route of addressing our concerns with the Veterans' Administration Inspector General. Is complaining enough? Does complaining accomplish anything? Are we just complaining in general? Or do we have specific issues that has been collected and separated into categories to ensure that when the Inspector General team come to Guam, that we have honed in on the real issues facing our community? Do we have the right headcount on the number of veterans living in Guam? Why do other territories like Puerto Rico and Virgin Island have their numbers correctly identified to the VA? Why is Guam different? Is the amount of VA monies allocated to the various states and territories is based on headcount, then why doesn't Guam have that data by now? For many years, the Veterans Administration have paid consulting firms to come up with data for each state and territory. Do we have to hire consultants? Do we have the money locally to adequately conduct a survey to assess the right headcount? Is the Veteran Commission, Guam Veteran Commission, adequately funded by our local government to conduct such a study? Why is the Guam Veteran Commission responsible for the conduct of the survey, and where is the money to take care of the cost of this survey? As member of the House Armed Services Committee, we're, our congressional delegate, demand that Veterans Administration provide Guam with the most updated data on the number of veterans residing in Guam. Can they require that the Defense Finance and Accounting Services, DEFAS, provide some data? Can they require that the Veteran Hospital Administration, VHA, provide some data? Can they require that the Veteran Benefit Administration provide some data? This is where we can collect all of this data, and we can cross-reference. How can the civilian aid to the Secretary of the Army help us with the issues we have as a community? Yes, we do have a Guam civilian aid to the Secretary of the Army. Do you know that the veterans are the best military recruiters for our nation? Veterans directly influence our young men and women, whether to join the military or not. What do you think happened when the veterans tell their younger generation not to join because they have been mistreated? What happened to our country then? The civilian aid in this community need to stand up and tell the higher-ups that, "Hey, we're going to have a recruiting issue here if we don't take care of all the veterans in Guam." When we are able to get the data we need from the various sources mentioned above, can we not then make a logical assessment of the number of veterans living in Guam, and then have that data vetted by the Veterans Administration, so we can get our fair share of funding for our veteran community? When we have these numbers, then we could see our fair share of resources put to bear on the problems and challenges we have as a community. Or are we just going to complain without first correctly identifying the cause of the problem and not merely addressing the symptoms? We can do better. As currently written, I do not support the resolution being presented here today. We need to be more specific as to the problem we are encountering before I support the resolution. For the record, I have not had any access issue. I have not have any medical issue with my treatment at C-Box, and I have been using C-Box for the longest time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Augustine, for your testimony this evening. Mr. Panglinen?
Good evening, Senators and fellow veterans. I didn't prepare a speech, but just off the top of my head, listening to the other veterans speak, a big concern on Guam, I believe, right now is that a lot of our soldiers coming back from the Afghanistan and the new war going on is mental care. A lot of our soldiers suffered trauma, and in order for you to receive trauma care here on Guam, we have, I think, two psychiatrists up there in C-Box, a couple of them over at the Veterans Center. But for the guys with really intense trauma issues, they don't have the service on Guam, which is like PRP in Honolulu. I strongly suggest, Senators, that we look into bringing a C-Box, I mean, a PRP to Guam for the soldiers that one can't afford the off-island trip, even though some of them, anyone above 30%, I believe, can have the luxury of going back to Hawaii if they're recommended. But if you're not recommended, and you have less than 20%, you're going to have to pay it out of your pocket, once again, leaving your family, your bills, everything behind your family might suffer, no food, stuff like that. And then another thing about C-Box. C-Box, don't get me wrong, have helped us out a lot, but on the same token, they have failed because there's an overload up at C-Box. SEBAC. A lot of the younger generation soldiers that don't have employment, that really have to depend on SEBAC, it won't work for them. There's no way it can work for them. I'm a working soldier, um, I came from Operation Shield and Storm. I work in the government, so I can, I can afford an outside insurance plus SEBAC. But what about the soldiers that are coming home? The guys that are unemployed, their only employment is to be deployed, and when they come home, they have nothing. Where are those soldiers? Where are their futures? Where is VA when they need them? We need them now. VA needs, those kind of people that come back from deployment that are unemployed need VA services now. Not six months down the road, not three months down the road, they need it right away when they come back. So everyone here might disagree or agree, but from personal stance, I strongly suggest that we address the issues of our younger soldiers. There's eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-olds that can't even adapt to civilian life. We need to take care of our younger soldiers. I mean, I'm not that old, but I'm not that young either. So please, let's address the, um, what's in front of us right now, and what's in front of us is the unemployment of the soldiers that just come back from deployment, and they really need mental health care. Um, and another thing, and not all the veteran services on Guam are bad, Veterans Affairs, personally, is, I mean, you can walk in there without an appointment, and they'll see you if they have to. SEBAC, sometimes if you walk in and you really tell them, and they do have time, but they don't have enough, um, people to take care of the veterans on Guam. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Panglin, for your testimony this evening. Mr. Conde?
Thank you for allowing me to testify this evening. My name's Bill Conde, and I'm chairman of the Guam Veterans Commission. Before I go any further, I wanna, wanna thank all the folks, the federal folks who are here this evening. They've done a fantastic job with the resources they have. They have been doing a fantastic job. I don't know of any veteran that has been denied any service. If you have been denied any service, come see me, and fix that right away. But I don't think so. I doubt it very seriously. I recently came back from Honolulu, based on a letter that I wrote to the Secretary of the VA. It generated the response that I wanted, and I tell you, it was the best trip I ever But before I go any further on my trip, I will say, I don't disagree, I mean, I don't agree with this resolution at all. Calling this public hearing tonight to me, and I don't, at least don't feel offended, is demagoguery. Fully demagoguery. Why do I say that? This is proof positive, bringing us here is proof positive that we don't have a handle on how to resolve problems. Just like the issue of not having a handle on having the numbers of veterans, the data, we don't have it, we don't have that, we don't have that, uh, those data for decades. Now, we're calling the veterans here to come and testify on the issues they're having, yet we don't have a handle on how we can resolve these things. None. Tell me, tell me what you've done to resolve this issue in a centralized fashion. I don't think there's any. And I think it's unfair to bring some of these veterans here to do their emotions and whatever it may take, so that they can testify for or against this issue. It's a domagoguery, domagoguery, uh, fashion of doing things. We have to have procedures, processes, and all those good things when our veterans complain. We don't have that, but the Veterans Commission have been doing a lot of those things since I took over. We have been centralizing a lot of those issues. I really think some folks have alluded to the fact that when we bring this up to the federal folks, it would be an embarrassment, because we don't have a process to ensure that we get all those problems together, that we look at trends, and then we can bring these things together and resolve it, perhaps, at our own level. Barriers? What barriers? To access care? Tell me if anybody here has ever had or have been denied access to SEBAC. There are procedural problems, but they don't have any access. A lot of people say that we have mismanaging problems. How do you know, what procedures do they have that you know that are not being followed? That we can say those are management problems? I don't think, I don't think we do have that. Unless you work out there and look at the procedures and the issues, or whatever they're doing, and compare it to what not is happening. I don't think we have that at all. Going and meeting the folks at Honolulu was, like I said in the beginning, was a result of a letter I wrote to the Secretary. It generated the response that I wanted. They asked me to sit down with them, to call them and tell them what the issues are. Well, I didn't do that. I went and paid on my own to go see them, just how much I care about these things. What happened during our meeting is this. We forged a sincere partnership, and that is the missing link. We forged now a sincere partnership with Mr. Pfeiffer and all his leadership team. Very, very sincere partnership. We now have a direct line of communication to him to look at issues, tell him the concerns, and he can resolve it on the spot if he can. If not, it'll probably take time, but we have that direct line of communication to him now. We have enhanced a better relationship on collaboration with those leaderships. That has been missing. It's all bang, bang, bang. We need to collaborate with them and talk to them in a conversational fashion so that we can resolve issues. That was, the missing link is, they don't understand the purpose of the commission. When they come here, most of the time, they go to the leadership, but never come to the commission. I don't know why that is. Commission is not in the loop for being provided information. When they come here on trips, we don't get any information at the commission. There is no opportunity to design a centralized system to fix problems. None. So what happens? We keep going and complaining about all kinds of stuff without sitting down and collaborating and finding ways to work together. This has been the problem. So I broached an idea to him, and he agreed with it. The idea is to sit down with all his people here, SEBAC, only the leaders of SEBAC, the benefits office, uh, the Veteran Center, and all the program managers of the different federal VA programs, the Veterans Commission folks, the Veterans Affairs Office, the commission members and other folks, so they can sit down on a quarterly basis and bring all these issues together, work it at our level, and things that we can resolve, we can move it up to him. He bought that off. That has been sorely needed for the longest time. A lot of people say that the VA folks in Hawaii don't care. Let me tell you, they care a lot. Let me tell you what they've done, what Mr. Tommy Driscoll did recently. We all talk about choice cards, that we're not in the radar scope. We are, we have been in the radar scope, but when that program launched nationwide, there was a lot of issues. But let me tell you what Driscoll did. He was so good that he was asked to go to Washington to help out. So what he did for us, for Guam, Seneemi, Virgin Islands, and those guys, and a couple of the states, is this. In order for you to be eligible for the choice card, two things gotta happen first. You gotta be registered in the system on August 2014 and before, or you are, if you register, you are a combat vet within five years of retirement, or five years if you got it, of the military. The good thing about what he did was he put us in a different category. We don't have to wait for thirty days, we don't have to wait for twenty days, we don't have to be within five hundred miles away. What he did was just, he put in the system that says if there is no fully-fledged VA hospital, then we are eligible to go. We don't have to wait for thirty days, we don't have to wait for twenty days, we don't have to wait, as long as we meet the eligible portion, and then that part of, and we automatically meet that part, because we don't have a VA hospital here, we can go to those folks, and the providers, and do whatever it takes to get our appointments. However, right now, there are system problems, but when those system problems are fixed, we won't have any problem at all. And guess what? There are a hundred and sixty-seven providers between Guam and Seneemi. That's amazing. And you know why they have a hundred and sixty-seven providers from Guam and Seneemi? Because the VA will pay them at the highest level so they can serve our folks. When that program works, there probably is no need for SEBAC, quite frankly, or the people won't be going to SEBAC, because now they have this opportunity to make a phone call, go straight to the provider, and we're done. I made a suggestion to them this morning to ensure, or to make sure, or to recommend, excuse me, for veterans just to go straight to the provider, get the appointment, if the veteran is in the system and has been registered. Just go there, do your thing, and then they can take care of each other later on as far as billing is concerned. They look into that, a suggestion, and hope it will be approved. That way, there will be no bureaucracy when our guys and gals go and use their quest card, or their, I'm sorry about that, their...
Choice card.
What was that? Choice card. Let me tell you what are the good stuff. I'm sorry, I know I have one. Anyway, let me tell you what are the good stuff that came out of that meeting. We've been pushing for two, over two years, to, um, to have VA in Honolulu, partner with the new clinic, I mean, the new hospital. That's gonna happen. The partnership is, they're negotiating the partnership with the new hospital. When that happens, guess what, guess what may happen? We may eliminate our guys and gals going to Honolulu. If the SEBAC has shortest of doctors, they probably can go there and get help. So that is a good thing that's gonna happen. We talked about retention of doctors, that was a big issue. What they've done recently was add one more doctor to SEBAC. One more doctor to SEBAC. They're hiring, they have backups in Honolulu right now. They're working on pay incentives to ensure they stay. And then I brought the idea of them going and trying to get commissary and BX privileges for them, but according to DOD, that cannot happen. But I brought that issue up to the lieutenant governor today, and he made a phone call immediately to the admiral, but she wasn't in. But I'm requesting for the administration to work with them, at least give them passes to go into the BX commissary and go get gas. That perhaps may help the retention issue. One of the issues that we didn't have, one of the things that we don't have, was that a briefing out of SEBAC for folks who are going to Honolulu. I wrote that checklist as soon as I came home, and I gave it to Mr. Pfeiffer, and he liked it. So now they're fine-tuning it to make sure that when our guys and gals go to Honolulu, they're gonna get that briefing. I also brought the idea of SEBAC making a handbook of services for our veterans when they go there. They're gonna do that, because they don't have that right now. So when our veterans get seen over there, they'll give them, hopefully, a book of services with all the processes, all the phone numbers, and all of these things, so they won't have, perhaps, they won't be confused, or if they're confused, somebody perhaps can help them out. Patient advocate, um, we now have a liaison, patient advocate at SEBAC, and then Honolulu just added another patient advocate to handle our concerns. But here's the thing, if we centralize all these issues, and we work together and bring them out, a lot of things can be resolved. He also liked the idea of, and he's willing to pay overtime, that's Mr. Pfeiffer, to help the Guam Veterans Commission with our program, our program to go out and help register people into the, veterans into the system, to go out to the villages and do whatever it takes. He likes the idea, and he's willing to pay overtime to get that done. I brought the idea, I bring up the idea about CHAMP VA. CHAMP VA is, belongs to the Navy. They've tried to help bring that program back, but they can't. We have to approach the Navy to see if we can get that done here, or bring it back again. That was taken out about two years ago, when the director there had left. The other thing that we request, and that we got, is we know, I've been looking around, I've been listening, a lot of our veterans are having issues with filling out their application for benefits, and also there's a new thing called, uh, fully-developed claim. So what Mr. Thompson is doing is making up a training DVD, so we can take the DVD and maybe put it on YouTube, or take it to our veterans out there, or run duplicates and give it to our veteran organization so they can run those programs, and run the training program for our folks. They are helping us on that one. I also ask them to give us the process, give us the procedures of when a veteran passes away a tripler. So they're giving us the process, the procedures, and so on, and we are attaching that to the checklist before they leave to tripler, so they can understand how their process These are just the brief things that I broached with those folks in Honolulu. I'm gonna tell you one thing, they really care about our veterans here. We have to centralize our issues. We have to develop a system where we can bring these things together, look for trends, and then work the problems at the local level with this quarterly meeting that we're gonna have, and then we can fix those problems. Then with a phone call away from me or Mr. Chairman at the Malins Council, we can just make some phone calls, perhaps, and get some of those issues resolved. I don't agree with what we're trying to do. We need to sit down, fine a system, fine tune the system. You know, a lot of my troops, we were in the military, you know, the first thing we said, like Mr. Dan said, "When you have a problem, work it with, at the lowest level. If you can resolve there, move it up to the intermediate level. If that can't be resolved, then go..." If that can't be resolved, then go to the IG, or write to your congressperson, and get an investigation done." Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kandev. Ms. Slomka?
Good evening, senators. I'm Marlene Slomka. I was not prepared to testify tonight, but, you know, listening to all my fellow veterans, you know, speak, you know, on their behalf, and as a veteran themselves, I want to speak as a Marlene Slomka, veteran, 26 and a half years. I disagree with, you know, requesting for an IG, primarily because while in service, as my fellow veterans have, we've been through a lot of IG processes and all of that. And you don't just go all the way up to address the issue, as Mr. Kandev, you know, was talking about. And also, I'm a VA success story, and I make that no secret to everybody. So, you know, prior to retirement, a lot of, I mean, the VA launched a lot of programs, and I raised my hand, I said, "May I please kindly be your guinea pig? You know, just tell me what to do, give me the checklist, and I will follow them religiously." And I have. You know, one of the things that I did, you know, my claim was a fully developed claim. And, you know, I didn't, in 2012, before I retired, they launched two programs, which was 180 days out before retirement, or 45 days out. But because there was, you know, we missed a, or there was some kind of miscommunication, so I missed the 180 days out. But when I was doing my out processing in Hawaii at Sparks Matunaga, and the VA folks, I mean, all of them, they're like, "You know what, Marlene? We have another program. It's called BDD, Benefits Delivered Upon Discharge." And that's 45 days out. I'm like, "Oh, okay, what do I have to do?" And then they walked me through, you know, my paperwork, the whole thing. So I was out of the system by one July, only because I missed the 180 days out. I got my disability pension one August. You know, and, you know, I was given a window of one year to provide substantiating documents, you know, to do the claim. They said, "Well, your shoulder, because we only have an X-ray, we didn't do the MRI, so you have one year to do that." But I got 70%, disability, and I was so afraid that if I put in all the documents that I have, that they were gonna tell me, you know, "You can't work," because, you know, I'm a workaholic. So I just sort of put that, and I just devoted myself to helping, you know, my fellow veterans. And, you know, I wanted to tell my story, how the VA helped me, and they have. And as a matter of fact, you know, for my senior veterans, you know, Vietnam vets, I really salute you and I thank you, because you spoke up. That's why I'm getting it better today. So, you know, I found, or actually, more like, Mr. Kitichai found me. And I didn't even know that my company, being a woman-owned service disabled, was in a VA pamphlet, so he found me. So he asked me, "Would you kindly help me, give me a price quotation to convert my home to make it ADA compliant?" I said, "Gladly." So then I didn't realize, it's a grant, it's called HISA, and I can't remember what the acronym stands for right now. So the purpose of that grant is to convert a veteran home and make it ADA compliant. So then he said, "Well, you know, I don't have any money, you know, I only have, you know, the budget is only $6,800." I said, "Oh, don't worry about it." So, you know, I mean, 2013, when he found me, and then, you know, we worked through it by early part of this year, only because it was the old system. And, you know, I was always giving feedback to Mr., I mean, through Craig Oswald, you know, their office, you know, how it was working. So I said, you know, "How can you help me make this process go longer? Because when I met Mr. Kitichai, he was still walking, but now he's on a cane." So, you know, I mean, I would just go there and do that. So finally, I finished the project. When Mr. Aaron, Mr. Aaron Williams, the team chief for the grant, and Mr. Zaldo, he's also team chief of one of the grants, they came. The first thing they asked me, "How much money did you lose in this project?" I'm like, "Okay, well, you know, I mean, technically, you know, the project, the scope that Mr. Kitichai wanted, but because it's what I needed to do, so that he can get around properly, $17,000." But he goes, "Do you know that you're only getting paid $6,800?" I said, "Yes." I said, you know, I mean, and my husband will tell me this, I'm not a businesswoman, because I don't compute that, you know? So he goes, "Well, what is your plan to help fellow veterans?" I said, "Well, we actually stood up a foundation. It's a nonprofit arm, so, because as a for-profit, you know, I cannot receive donations, and there are others out there who wants to help. So at least they could get the tax benefit." And because of that, you know, I've been working very closely with Mr. Aaron Williams. He said, and Mr. Zaldo, you know, and he, Mr. Zaldo asked me, "Would you build a home for a veteran for $68,000?" And I said, "Yes." And he goes, "How do you plan to do that?" I said, "I don't know yet, but I'm pretty sure that, you know, when the war is out, you know, I mean, that when there's a will, there's a way." That's just like with this HISA grant. I'm working with two other fellow veterans right now, senior veterans. No, I'm sorry, one of them actually is a veteran out of the Iraqi Afghanistan, you know, my fellow guard member, he's an amputee. But, you know, I mean, at first, I was kind of apprehensive about coming here. I'm like, "Well, you know, do I say I support or I don't support?" But you know what? I'm gonna say, "I don't support it, because I see a lot of the things that we are doing on the side, and since I started coming to the Guam Vet Commission in 2013, I have seen so much improvement in how, you know, what I thought, and I went through this myself when I first retired. Having been in uniform, we were trained to have structure. When I retired, I tell you, I was lost. I was lost. I'm like, "Okay, I don't have to wake up at 4:30, no PT and everything." And then I was thinking, I'm like, "Wow," you know, and I sort of sat back and observed, I go. But when I saw what Mr. Kandev was doing, and then coordinating with GVAO, and, you know, and at the time, Mr. Npinka was also the Gvac chair, so I watched all of that. With their very limited resources, they actually accomplished a lot. And then also, to address the question earlier by one of our fellow veterans, "How do you react to that picture when I show you a picture of my son with a congresswoman?" Well, I will tell you, in 1989, I'm the first female soldier of the year for the Guam Army National Guard. Just an E4, I didn't even know, I thought for sure I was in trouble, because I was being summoned to the legislature. I didn't really realize that Senator Madeline Bordalio wrote a legislative resolution to recognize my accomplishment. I didn't even know that. I'm like, "Wow, you know, she sees me. You know, I'm a nobody, and she sees me." For me, when I see my congresswoman put her life in danger to come, in a face of danger, to come see our troops, you know what? I would dust off the ground and kiss that ground that she walks on, to put her life in danger to come see me. You know, that's my reaction. And again, I speak for myself. You know, sometimes I get, I'm like, "Okay," when my fellow veterans say, "You know, I can speak for..." I cannot do that. Okay, I cannot do that. You know, and for the VA, right now, we're actually collaborating with the Guam Trades Academy. And in reference to your concern about our young generation of veterans about, you know, not having employment after, you know, which deployment is their only way of being employed, I was part of the program launched by the governor's office, it's called Keeping Your Guard Up Initiative. Before our troops touched their boots on the ground, you know, we worked closely with GCC, with Guam Trades Academy, and there were some training programs. So now, I'm actually, I mean, our team is collaborating with the Guam Trades Academy. Their program is already approved by the VA. And we're also communicating that with Mr. Pfeffer. And then there's, and they have a program called Compensated Work Therapy, whereas working is part of, you know, a veteran's, you know, therapy, yet will, yes. So, you know, okay, my five minutes is up, sorry. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Slomka. Appreciate your testimony this evening. Any questions for anyone in the panel? Senators? If not, thank you very much, fellow veterans, for your service. If I can invite the following individuals, Mr. Rodney Cruz, Dan Minoz, Ryan Mindiola, Peter Skro, and Roland Ada. Once again, Rodney Cruz, Dan Minoz, Ryan Mindiola, Peter Skro, and Roland Ada. And then we have one final panel of individuals to provide testimony. I see two have joined us, so I'm gonna go ahead and call up a few other individuals. Mr. John Kitichai, Henry, I apologize, Mancor. If I can invite Henry Mancor and Joanne Manglona. If you're in the audience, and you don't have any intention of providing oral testimony, I'm gonna continue down the list. J.C. Moore, Edward Chang, and Fred Bloss. Once again, if I can invite Henry, Joanne, J.C. Moore, Edward Chang, and Fred Bloss, please, to join us up front. And Mr. Tony Perez? Is there a Tony Perez in the audience? If he would like to provide testimony, he's more than welcome to join us up front. Okay, then you're good, you're good, Mr. Perez. Like I said, if your preference is not to provide oral testimony, then we're good on that. Okay, Mr. Cruz, please identify yourself for the record.
Howdy and good evening, senators. Senator Cruz, Senator Morrison, Senator Ada, Senator Bloss. My name is Ronnie Cruz Jr. I'm the founder and president of the Iraq, Afghanistan, and Persian Gulf veterans. Tonight, I'll be testifying on behalf of my organizations, who have made up 600-plus members, mostly from the guard and reserves of the Guam Army and Air Guard. I want to take this time first to thank you for recognizing my testimony, and my written testimony, on behalf of our organization, a sole regional nonprofit veteran organization under the 501(c). And we are in support of the bill, Resolution 111-33. As a retired employee who worked at the Department of Veteran Affairs, both Guam and the Grants Pass Vet Center Readjustment Counseling Service for several years, I know how privileged it can be to care for veterans on a daily basis. Regardless of how fulfilling VA employment often is, the VA's ability to effectively and efficiently recruit and retain qualified medical professionals to treat veterans is seriously fractured. For example, in recent years, Guam, at a community-based outpatient clinic, it has not had adequate physician staff, and with the constant resignation of doctors, some who had been on for a minimum of two weeks or six months, more or less, primary care providers have not been committed more than a year at the Guam VA CBOC. Officials from the Pacific Island Healthcare System and the VISIN-21 has attributed that to the difficulty of recruiting physicians on Guam. And while I understand the difficulty, I think VA's over-hiring bureaucratic process contributes to the inability to recruit a physician for years. Instead, they are filtered through a human resource office in Honolulu, Hawaii, which is thousands of miles across the Pacific Ocean. As important as effective recruitment is, retention of employees is critical. It's not hard to see why the VA survey from Honolulu results ranked dead last among the nation's VA healthcare system. When a VA healthcare system like the one on Guam is inadequately staffed, or makes decisions to leave the VA, our veterans lose out and continue to burden the sacrifice to our commitment to them for their service. Critical to that, and to all VA's plans regarding the delivery and quality of care, is making sure those on the front lines providing direct patient care are not only involved, but leading the efforts to make the VA healthcare stronger on Guam. In respect, we hope, we only hope that the Honolulu VA leadership, under the Section 301, I say again, under the Section 301 of the Veteran Access Care and Accountability Act, signed by the President last year mandated that the VA shall submit a report assessing the staffing of each medical facility of the department, and insight that through this report, Guam can see a better primary care providers and service of care. Thus, the improving of veterans' access to care of 2015. The VA Guam CBOC clinic has been under great distress for quite some time. Most of it, if not all, issues in regards to the operation and quality of care at the CBOC is not acceptable, and does not bring forth good quality of service for the veterans and their families in Guam. Issues of the quality of medical care were raised and addressed by medical professionals, such as the clinic office manager, Ms. Santos, in a letter to Senator Uggan. The Guam VA CBOC, under the purview of the leadership of Mr. Wayne Pfeffer, Hawaii's top leadership, has limited his ability to utilize their position, his leadership, to obtain the support needed to providing a standard operating VA facility. Fortunately, the Guam VA CBOC and the Guam Vet Center is guided by the VA mission statement and core values. Sadly, it is hard to believe that the Guam VA CBOC adheres to the ICARE, has poorly performed to our island and veterans and their families. Unfortunately, however, as the patient care service has continued to grow, so have the management and oversight problems that have plagued the system through which the VA provider cared to veterans outside the heavily barred wire fence of the VA facility. It is seriously flawed. It is not, if not altogether, broken. As to the size of the clinic, which was not part of the original blueprint, and will foresee, and will not foresee an expansion, as noted by the former Secretary of VA. Senators, I ask for your attention to take note that our veterans continue to have to wait for service more than 30 days, having to delay patient care, and as a result, having to put our veterans in harm's way and at high risk. In the past couple of weeks, the VA has taken tremendous efforts in flooding the Guam VA clinic with staff, to the point that there is no space to accommodate such personnel, and to include a contract agreement with the Guam Public Health Northern and Southern Facilities to deviate from the frustrated and angered veterans on Guam due to the lack and long history of patient care services, issues, and concerns. I honestly wish that I could believe that was going to solve our long history of concerns, but it is the mere fact of a bureaucratic fix. However, given the history of the past failure we have seen already, I have serious reservations that the actions VA is taking now will address the core challenges that the VA faces, and not simply lead to yet further a fragmented care and an inability to deliver quality care, especially in our rural community on Guam. The challenges that face with the majority of our members, and I know that our generation of young veterans is not the only one. We talked about the doctors, we talked about the delayed care, appointments past 30 days. VA Choice Program does not pertain to Guam. Delayed in referrals approval from Hawaii. Access to health care. Crisis hotlines do not pertain to Guam and refer to Philippines. Lastly, the most common one, the choice card, not recognized in Guam. And I assure you that this morning at 2:00 a.m., I made a phone call to the choice card number that was on the card, and I was prompted that Guam does not exist in the VA Choice Program at all, and for me to contact the VA clinic in Honolulu for further assistance. The top three concerns regarding service from the Department of Veteran Affairs on Guam noted by the Iraq, Afghanistan, Persian Gulf veterans of the Pacific would highly recommend as inadequate and insufficient primary care doctors and social workers need to better support, need better support from Honolulu and VISIN-21. Urgent care hours to include mental health intensive treatment program for both male and female vets, for which we do not have right now. Better referral service for consult service. Again, the Veteran Choice Program is part of the Veteran Choice, Access, Choice, and Accountability Act of 2014, but is not properly implemented for Guam. With the recent loss of a veteran member of the IAPG VP due to medical and mental health conditions related to stressors and conditions due to service-connected trauma, and the lack of appropriate and responsive outpatient medical and mental health care treatment, and the lack of doctors, IAPG VP has taken the role of advocacy and support for the implementation of the Clay Hunt Act, with veterans struggling with the military service-connected military injuries and illness. Guam has a large number of veterans that have served the military for many years. Many of them have serving the global war on terrorism, the Vietnam War, the Korean War, the World War II, veterans as well. A generation of heroism that ranks the highest in the nation compared to any 51 states. It is well documented that many who have deployed struggle with physical and mental trauma, and to include our recent service members from the Guam Army and Air Guard returning home from the Afghanistan War. We cannot afford to allow the VA to continue to fail and struggle to impose better health care in an inherently flawed system. We cannot rely on the promises from the VA that they can finally get it right. Our veterans are everywhere. They come and go because of the inadequacy of quality care the VA cannot provide here in Guam. Getting it right is about honoring their preferences, their choice, and their daily lives, as well as their service to our nation. Getting it right is telling the Vietnam or Korean War veteran that he doesn't have to wait one month for approval from Honolulu to the nearest medical facility for his dialysis or cancer treatments. or cancer treatments. Getting it right is telling a Gulf War veteran that she doesn't have to take a week off from work to go off-island for treatment for a women's clinic or program. She can stay on Guam if she would prefer and be with family. Getting it right is telling a young veteran like myself, recently home from the Iraq or Afghanistan War, that he doesn't have to sit and wait all day in the waiting room or wait three to six months to see his doctor. He can choose another provider who he can see now and spend the afternoon with the people he missed while he was overseas defending our freedom. This is what we are talking about today, and these issues and concerns, stories that my colleagues and I hear every day from veterans in our community who are fed up are what I want all of us to keep foremost in our minds this evening as we talk about how we can make this program better and to get it right for the veterans and those who have served this nation and this island honorably. IAPG VP, together with our veteran service organizations, are calling on our Congresswoman to support this legislation, which would begin to address critical needs within the Guam VA CBOC and Guam Vet Center facilities by improving the quality of access of care to all veterans and their dependents. Senators, lastly, we ask that you take into consideration from the public hearing and that through the compelled statements from our community, veteran leaders, and most importantly, veterans and their families, that beyond the current temporary assets that the response from Honolulu that you, as a legislative body, would bring into law, that through recognizing these issues and concerns from the Guam CBOC and the Guam Vet Center, past and present, that requesting Guam's delegate Congressman Brown, the United States, to call for an investigation for Veterans Affairs Office Inspector General to substantiate allegations into the access barriers actually affecting the quality of primary and specialty care and mismanagement at the Veterans Affairs Guam outpatient clinic and Guam Vet Center. This concludes my testimony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cruz, for your testimony this evening. You can identify yourself.
Ryan Mendiola. I didn't prepare no speech or anything. I'm just here to give testimony on my personal experiences Guam Vet Center and the CBOC. Like other things, there are goods and there are bads. Personally, I've experienced positive things at the Guam Vet Center when I needed something or somebody to talk to. But CBOC divided into two houses, the mental health side and the medical side. The mental health side has been good with me. But when we talk about the medical side of the house, that's where I have the issue. There have been times when I called, and after waiting five minutes of listening to people talking about, thinking about suicide and referring hotlines, I leave a message. And this has not happened, this has happened more than once, numerous times. I will leave messages saying I need to see a doctor. I would wait two, three days, a week. Then I call back and say, or I'll go into the clinic, please, did you guys send me messages? No, we don't know what you're talking about, implying like I don't know what I'm doing. Now, I know I call and I leave messages. I don't know if that's a procedural issue or is it something that needs to be looked at. Another thing is the turnaround point, the turnaround ratio as far as doctors. It's about frustrating for a lot of us too to even reach out, veterans to even leave the house and go to this clinic, and to find out your doctor changed again on you. Now, you've got to start all over again with another person and try to build that rapport again so I can be familiar with you and your challenges. I keep hearing that things are going to happen, things are going to happen, oh, this is in the works. Well, you know what? I don't know how long it's going to take, because you know, we'll hear that saying, that cliche, you know, talk is cheap. You know, how many more years are we going to wait? Is it going to happen a year again? Didn't we hear that 10 years ago? The thing is, is that we need to have doctors that are there. We need to have doctors that are familiar with you, instead of you starting all over again, or instead of you saying, oh, I put a doctor's on, so he left. And they also need to look at, those guys need help too. Some of those doctors, they actually look like they need doctors themselves. That's how some of them look, burned out. I know one person in mind. And as far as the size of the clinic, as far as its adequacy for the amount of people that it serves, especially with these wars coming up, these wars now, and probably obviously going to be more again in the future, it's not consistent. They're packed in there like sardines, and sometimes they can't even figure out where they're going to put us. And that kind of discourages you from even coming out in the first place and asking for help, because a lot of times when we come home, tell you this, we'd just rather be left alone, man. We don't want to bother nobody. And that doesn't help when you get that kind of experiences. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mendiola, for your testimony this evening.
Hi, my name is Juliette Moore, wife of the late Sergeant Paul Moore, who was deployed to Operation Enduring Freedom Afghanistan. I am here today to testify that my husband died due to medical delays in treatments from the VA clinic and hospitals. For over two years, we have been seeking help, and it shouldn't have taken more than two years to find a facility for medical treatment for my husband. A month prior to his death, he had a physical done with the new physician who replaced his primary care physician, Dr. Heisel. After the physical, you would have to wonder what type of physical did he receive, because a month later, he died. And you have to wonder if his death would have been prevented. Recently, I have followed up with my husband's medical records off-island, only to find out that my medical records requests were never received from the CBOC clinic to Hawaii. And I requested May 11th. I spoke to Jamie from Hawaii. I asked her, did you receive my husband's medical request? She said no. Later on that day, I had to fax her the request. Now, if the VA CBOC clinic cannot process something as small as paperwork, what more patient care, quality of life? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moore. Thank you for presenting your testimony this evening.
Chairman, Senator Uggan, and B.J. Cruz, and Mr. Motion, and especially the Colonel Adet, and Mrs. Storres. My name is John Eric Kiritichai. I'm also a retiree. You know, coming over here, when I heard that there's a veterans going on, some kind of public hearing, I have time to dress up, just to go on there, just like this, you know? I know I got long hair. But anyway, I come over here for, you know, to let you know that I have no problem calling my medicine in Hawaii, or in the hospital, or when I visit the VA clinic. I don't have no problem. These guys are doing outstanding job. Or when I go up to the federal, anyway, to thank the federals here, they're all professional. You know, listen to these guys here, they're all complaining, you know? It's nice to be complaining, but I don't see no problem, you know? This guy has to be productive, you know, make sure they know what they're doing. They're going to have a Inspector General to come over here, you know? It's a waste of time, you know? I think it wastes time to you, Mr. Chairman, who's the chairman, Mr. Uggan, right? Senator Uggan is the chairman? Okay. It's Poshia. See, you know, I have no problem. I've been taking care. I got PTSD. I'm not here for the Purple Heart, you know? I'm here myself, you know, to support this, whatever this bill, you know? I mean, not to support the bill, I'm here to let you know that I'm not in favor of this bill. This bill is for paraplegic suicide, you know? Or whatever you guys are doing, you know? You know, to me, you know, you just, you would need to go out there and see these guys. These guys in the veterans here in Assam, and go up to the hospital, and you know, this guy, if you go up there, you see what they're doing, you know? I don't see no complaint. Matter of fact, I'm a Poshia from this PTSD I get from my second gunshot wound, you know? And I got, matter of fact, I got an appointment tomorrow. And, you know, I don't have to wait for 30 days or something, you just have to, you know? The guy, one smart man that helped me here is the late Major Gavro. He's the one who said, look up for John Kiritichai. Look up for John Kiritichai. That means you have to go out yourself. If you go out there and keep on asking around, I mean, you know, asking your friend or somebody, you need to go out there and see these guys. You know, that's what I did. So, you know, I'm just here to let you know. Again, I'm here, I did provide some document, but I'm not here for the Purple Heart. The one that I had there, I think you saw that, the Bostar, read that? Right now, it's missing. There's one missing here. And it took me 12 to be 65 years old, you know? It really bothered me. And, you know, just because I'm the only one tomorrow on the platoon or the company, you know? I was really, really sad. I was the only one, only tomorrow. They don't like tomorrow, when I was down in Vietnam. I was the only one, I guess because I volunteer. I'm hardcore, you know? I did other things down there in Vietnam. So, there's missing there. Maybe you'll know what's the next line on this award I got here, you know? But that's why I'm here for that. There's a lot of things there when you read, one full page, and that's since 1968, '69. You got that document there, and that's a true story. I did, and I'm a PTSD man, you know? So, I'd let you know. Thank you for hearing me here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kiritichai, for your testimony this evening. Folks, thank you for your service to our island, to our country. Mr. Mendiola, if I can invite you up, and if there's anyone else in the audience who would like to provide testimony and who has not signed up, I invite you up to the front. One more? Okay. I apologize, Roddy. I understand you have an additional testimony, and then we'll entertain Mr. Mendiola and then Jesse. Go ahead. You may proceed.
How many senators again? My name is Ronnie Cruz. This testimony is my personal experience with the CBOC here in Guam over the past five years. Let this hearing be about listening to the stories that the veteran, a disabled veteran, a combat veteran, and his family have endured the pain of not only being denied care, but also the system that exists in Holland that fails to provide quality care in developing veterans' healthcare of excellence on Guam. Guam has been the sore behind the ear of the VA Pacific Island Healthcare System many years and has been under the purview of those who sit in a state-of-the-art office in Honolulu and VISIN-21 in San Francisco. For them, Guam has not been a priority for those reasons of our status as a territory and a troublesome providing population count of veterans. I'm here to represent myself on the challenges that I have faced in the past five years as a veteran who had traveled to off-island for proper treatment and care as a second-class U.S. citizen. Here are a few of the issues that I have encountered with the Guam CBOC Center. I have waited a year to receive a referral to specialty care and had to request several times within the same year to get a referral to see a specialist, author of which was filed with the patient advocate in Honolulu. The Guam CBOC has faxed my referral to a local specialist, physical therapy on-island, one day after it had expired, and having to wait over six months for this approval, and now having to wait again another month for another approval to provide treatment for my military service-connected injury. I am scheduled for routine appointments, however, that is canceled or rescheduled due to the change in providers or shortness of providers, to include receiving notification letters in the mail several weeks after my appointment date was scheduled. I have to wait for my medication to be mailed to me from Honolulu, but unfortunately, it has been arriving from Arizona instead of Honolulu, which causes more delay to my treatment of chronic pain with fibromyalgia, spinal injury, TBI, and PTSD. After seeing different primary care providers, I have gone through more than four different treatment plans, a total of five different primary care providers, to include inconsistent medications prescribed and conflicting treatment care plans to manage my illness and injury. I am 100% disabled vet. I have a VA Choice Card that entitles me under the Veterans Choice Program, which is part of the Veterans Choice Access Accountability Act of 2014. Although, like as I reported earlier, a phone call this morning to confirm, to get an early appointment for another injury, sadly, as it is, I was turned away for treatment outside of the VA and still have to wait for Hawaii to approve a medical referral treatment if I decide to seek outside care, which contradicts with the Veteran Choice Program that was mandated and signed by the President, that which includes that Guam does not fall under the purview of the Department of Veteran Affairs Veteran Choice Program. The law directs the establishment of Veteran Choice Card Benefit that provides a commitment on behalf of this nation that needed healthcare service or treatment for veterans will never again be unreasonably delayed because of VA's wait time are over 30 days or if the VA medical facility cannot provide the treatment. I have requested a VA OIG investigation against one of my providers at the CBOC because of direct violation of my privacy rights and the HIPAA violation that has cause-effect and wrongdoing or defamation of character to myself as a disabled veteran, which is an active claim right now. When I requested for a change of provider to be assigned to me, they could not resent my request and waited over a year after compiling complaints that I had filed with the Honolulu Patient Advocate against the Guam CBOC. I have issues getting ahold of patient care staff and/or my nurse to address my current issues or to basically get more information regarding the follow-up with referrals or calls not returned from an automated messenger machine that I constantly leave or my caregiver constantly leaves at the Guam CBOC. Recently, in the past couple of weeks, I met with my new primary care provider, Dr. Sarah Magel. Come to find out, as an MD who was hired through the rapid hiring process, is not able to prescribe me any medications for my chronic pain. I asked her the reason why. She couldn't give me an answer. She then led to Dr. Head, who is the senior nurse or senior doctor at the clinic, and even then, Dr. Head did not want to make a decision based on the needs that I was requesting for. She came back into the office where I sat patiently waiting for her and told me that they will refer me to see Dr. Gill, who is my mental health provider, to prescribe me my pain meds. Why does a mental health provider have to provide me my pain meds when I'm there to see the primary care provider for my injuries? These are the obstacles that I have to face. I was in the ER room two weeks ago because of no medication to treat my symptoms or my illness or my injuries. I was suffering. I couldn't get out of bed. I couldn't leave the house. Today, I arrived again back in the ER this morning, again, in trouble of my injuries and illness. The doctor at the ER asked me, why didn't the VA do anything about this? And I simply said, they couldn't, they didn't want, they turned me away, they couldn't provide me with the help. That's why I'm here today in your office in the ER room. Sadly to say, that the doctor I was seeing is the husband of the recently-resigned Dr. Childers, and he was kind of upset about that as well. As I approached the Naval Hospital for a referral at the Orthopedics Department for my injuries from my spine and my knee and my shoulder, the doctor put in his notes, and I have on my record stated by the doctor, that he can no longer provide injections, pain injections, steroids injections, to help me deal with my pains every day. He highly recommended that the VA request for pain management, through which none is recognized on Guam for veterans. Lastly, he stated that he highly recommended that I leave Guam, seek treatment elsewhere. Why does a son of Guam who served in the invasion of the Iraq War, who watched his Why does a son of Guam who served in the invasion of the Iraq War, who watched his second cousin pass away, Wesley Rivera-Jude, come home to bury him? And because the troubles of war, I'm being told to leave Guam to seek medical treatment? My primary care provider has failed to properly diagnose my military-service-connected illness and injuries based on their findings. But they recognize to address those findings and the diagnosis to me in their system that was done by the Army, through which I was medevac out of theater, not once, not twice, but three times. This is the reality of a disabled combat veteran who has, who has to burden for his service and sacrifice to our nation. I don't ask much for treatment or a red carpet service in this matter. All I ask is for the VA to provide me the care to address my needs for my disability and to live a comfortable life and to be with my family, but not to shove pharmaceutical meds down my throat to keep me quiet and hoping that solves the problem. It is such a shame that I have to live with the same attitude that was constantly repeated by the Army, suck it up and drive on. Furthermore, Guam is not alone in this matter, and, and, and it is a nationwide concern for the VA. In recent months, May fifteen, twenty fifteen, to be exact, the VA was called to the Veterans Affairs Subcommittee on Health on the Veterans Affairs Staffing Issues. Although with great strides that the VA has come from the past several decades, as to where it once stood on the E Wing on the old naval hospital grounds, to its heavily fortified compound, I like to recognize an individual for her great work who has kept me alive to this day. Dr. Joan Gill, for continuing to stay affirm and committed to the Veterans of Guam at the Guam Seabock, and providing the veteran healthcare of excellence to myself and many veterans on Guam. I'm not about bad-mouthing or bashing the VA healthcare system on Guam, but it is, it is what it is, and I only hope that the VA can find more doctors like Dr. Gill. And I would like to thank her personally for going beyond the call of service for which, for which a system that is managed thousands of miles away in Honolulu that tries its best to provide good quality care. Finally, with recent flooding of staff at the clinic as a temporary fix, let us be cautioned of how committed is this VA willing to uphold its promise to the patient care service, to the Veterans of Guam, and to those veterans who travel here for care. As we see the progress and the attempts of the VA to do what can be done, but the, but the long wait and challenges have to be assessed on an annual basis, if not quarterly, and should be prompt a VA OIG investigation to underlying that concern brought forward today. I thank all those here listening to my testimony, and applaud your effort and efforts to address the needs on veterans on our island's healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Cruz, for your testimony this evening. Mr. Dedasco, and then we'll go to Mr. Manglonya.
Senator, I need to prepare myself, because I was listening today, and I'm gonna make my, my, my impromptu speech short. As I listened today, and I, I come to a lot of the, a lot of the public hearing where it interests me. I took civic and, in, in, in Catholic school down in Mount Carmel, and I'll tell you what, that teaches me how to be involved with my, with the people that surround me, whether it's the nation, whether it's in far East, whether, whether it's here at our home, and I find it, I find it, you know, it educates me. And the few things that I'd like to say here is, number one, I disagree with, with some of the comments that, that were done today. First of all, number one, the only governor, both from all the territories and the fifty states, whoever went down to Vietnam, who went down there with a guy by the name of Johnny Sablon, the first entertainer, the icon, and Johnny Gerber. They were down there, and when, before the governor went down there, he had asked, he had asked for all the, 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 the family members, if, if they would like to send a tape of themselves, a picture of themselves, to assist them, and he went down there, of course. A lot, a lot, a lot of the Tamores weren't, weren't down there because they had to go out, you know, the Marines have to go out there and do the recon, somebody has to protect the perimeter. But Governor Kamauchun was down there, the only governor that ever went down there, and you know, I'll tell you what, it brought a lot of joy, it brought a lot of pride to the Tamores that were down there, that attended the place. And I, and I just felt that, and I think I should bring that up, you know, and I, and I also want to say that, you know, I, I frequent the, the Seabock. In, in the last month and a half, I had acupuncture in my back because I'm having back problem, and I also have a surgery just last week by Dr. Landstrom, and I just got my glasses, thank God, for free because of the VA. And, and, and I'll tell you, the VA is not perfect, but I second his motion. Dr. Gill is one of the best doctor that we have up there, and I'm telling, I'm telling this, and I'm no, no, no offense to the other one, but I'm sure they've, they've done their best, but I'm just saying that, you know, you know, thank God for the VA, I'm, I'm very well taken care of, you know, and I, and I just want to say too that I like to make things short, because remember Mr. Douglas, when he was going against Abraham Lincoln? He spoke about two hours about himself and what he was gonna do. Abraham Lincoln made an eight-minute speech, and says, "Four years, four scores and seven years ago." That speech was remembered more than what Mr. Douglas said, and he became the sixth impression of the United States of America. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dedasco, appreciate your testimony this evening. Mr. Manglonya? Please identify yourself for the record and proceed. You may proceed, Mr. Manglonya.
Good evening, Senator Algon, speakers, distinguished senators. It's a shame that we come to this situation to have this type of hearing. You hear both sides' story, I'm gonna tell you some of the facts, but for myself, I do not support this legislation. Let me start with a gentleman that mentioned about Madeleine Bordalou, and I guess that's your father that went to Vietnam. I was one of the delegation in nineteen sixty-eight. I was fighting, I was in infantry, and I was platoon sergeant for an infantry unit. Out of the blue, I got called on the radio, "The load is coming out there to pick me up." And it created morale for all the Tamores. Maybe people has a different perception, but when the governor comes to Vietnam, thank God for your father, because he create a lot of spirit core, the morale was so high, and I never seen a governor spend time to devote his time in combat. When Governor Bordalou came to Europe, I was his sponsor when he came with Madeleine. I had to relate, I had two thousand Tamores in, in Europe released for that purpose, and people should understand that they leave their loved ones here to look after the veterans. And I thank for your father, Governor Bordalou, and probably Madeleine. You hear all the stories, but, you know, credit should be given where it's due. The facts that I'm, I'm gonna give you this afternoon because loudly, some individual mentioned about difficulty getting treatment for the outreach program. Let me give you some statistics. The, the readjustment counseling, indivison, family, you know, they, they go out to the national guard before they got deployed and do an outreach briefing. They have seen over four thousand veterans in counseling, four thousand. Right now, they have only two hundred open cases. Not only Guam, but they go to Commonwealth, they go to Palau, they go to Koceroi, they go to Mojaru, Marshall Island. Just that outreach program has to cover not only Guam, but my condition. So you have to see the big vast of responsibility. The headquarters is in California, at Fairfield, California, but they help a lot of veterans, and, you know, I, I just hate to see a veteran complain. I came for both, for myself as a veteran, and also as a director for the Veterans Administration in Guam. What I like to do, I just got this job what, six weeks ago, but we got to put in perspective. I heard people about registering veterans. I just talked to Mr. Pfeiffer this morning in Hawaii, he's the director for the benefit, for the medical. We are in constant communication. We have people from Tijuana right back here. We communicate weakly on veterans' benefit, weakly, and they, they do their darndest to help us out. Some people on the side trying to make things worse, but, you know, we have to take care of a problem here, and I agree with Conde and Danny Mendiola. This house is not a, it's, it's just in-house problem, it's a, and we could take care of it. I talked, I just talked to Ms. Santos this morning, I go there almost every day, so I know the problem. Let me tell you, the turnaround time on, on the, on the appointments, three days, three days. You could walk in, the maximum is three days to five days on appointment time. The turnaround time on benefit, one hundred and nineteen days, right? One hundred and nineteen, if you put your benefit now, one hundred and nineteen days, we're working thought by December, we should go down to zero, because we have the technology. Really, we should appreciate for, for all the things that we've been doing, we're making changes. We talk about numbers, you know, that every veteran that registered at Seabock received twenty-five hundred dollars. How many veterans registered up there? Thirty-six hundred, right now. How many veterans we got in Guam? I have twenty-three thousand registered in my office right now, twenty-three thousand. What we need to do, we talk about different registration, I have a system, I create a system. Right now, the individual composition, I met with the hospital commander, I met with the TRICARE, I met with Seabock, I met with Dr. Santos, I met with this guy, Satiza, every, and I also met with DMV, every veteran that registered, we download. My target is by December this year, I'm gonna get all the veterans. I spoke to mayor last year, August last year, remember when I talked to each island mayor? To have the mayor help me out, I just spoke with mayor three weeks ago, I was their guest speaker. What they're gonna do is to give me the schedule, the date and time, I'm gonna have either Felix Casomero or Mojaru, Hunter will go to each village and register the veteran. The more veteran we have, the better we are. But let me tell you the ratio. Every doctor should have nine hundred to a thousand patient, nine hundred to a thousand patients, by ratio, nationwide. Right now, as a matter of fact, I just give it to the chairman, we have four teams. Two days, starting of July twentieth, two days they're gonna spend at Northern Clinic, two days at Southern Clinic. They got four teams from Hawaii. So in that way, at least we have ample doctors, but we need to register, please, we need to register at Seabock. That's the only way to allocate most, more slots, because according to the registration, all we need is three doctors, because every thousand patient is one doctor. But we have to register. How many times we've been messing wrong with registration, so, for so many years? Somebody make a comment, as a matter of fact, last year, I took the numbers from Veterans Administration in Washington, D.C., eight thousand only is registered, eight thousand, because a lot of people doesn't register. Just this morning, I had to get the former governor, Gutierrez, to register this morning. We have a lot of people that are veteran and didn't register. Let me give you an example, the one that owns Ambrose, he's an artilleryman, never registered. The one that owns personal finance, Mr. Kamauchun, never registered, and those artillery people, they'll register, they're veteran, but they don't have either the courage or the drive to go down there. We have to register, that's what, that's all goal. But let's, you know, really, it amazes me to have this type of hearing, because we could fix it in-house, we're in the process to fix this. We have the amount of doctors now allocated in Guam, we have four teams. If any veteran, please, comes to your office, direct it to my office, and I'll take care of it, that's my job. I don't want to be doing, you know, you're spending your quality time on somebody's problem, that's my, that's my job as the Veterans Administration here. We got to work together. It, it's just, it just amazes me to, to call some of these gentlemen, that they're doing their job, they're really doing a great job. It's just a matter of putting people on the right place and let the people do their job, because when I came here, I got people going different direction trying to register, that's my job, and it's mandated, you're the, you're the people that write the law, and it's mandated that I have to do the registration. All I need is personnel. I'm sorry, I just blew my, my cool, but really, I just, I just hate to see people bad-mouthing the Seabock and also the outreach program. They're doing a fantastic job. It's just a matter of working together. Oh, it takes a good leadership, and if we, if we have, if you get a problem, I, I talk to Dr. Gill almost daily, to Dr. Head, all those docs to Tijuana, so that's my job. If any veteran comes to you, refer me, refer them to Assen. If you go, come to Assen and one of my people didn't take care of you, I want to tell me personally, because that, that office is their office, and if somebody turn them around, they won't have a job. I, I, I'll tell you, they won't have a job, because my job is to make sure that we take care of veterans, and I thank you for your, for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Manglonya, and certainly best wishes in your continued service to our veterans. Just one thing to bring to your attention, I know that the Veterans Registry is public law, and you have provided approximately fifty thousand dollars within the Governor's Transfer Authority to be able to assist you with that Veterans Registry, so I certainly hope that before the end of the FY that you're able to access some of those resources, because that's one of the issues that was brought up during the course of this discussion. You know, in listening very intently to our veterans who spoke today, because we heard from both sides, issues with regards to medical treatment, issues with regards to the process, and there's one thing that really sticks out in my mind in terms of the comments that were shared, both pros and cons, and that it's a systemic issue. When you have medical physicians coming to Guam and unfortunately leaving before the conclusion or within a few months of their contract term, there's an issue. And, and that's, and that's where actually Congressman Miller, who's the chairman of the Veterans Affairs Committee out of the U.S. Congress, had already, he was briefed on this particular issue, and I understand the Congresswoman Bordalou is working to try to address it because it's a system issue that has to be perhaps addressed by Congress. But there are issues with regards to our veteran services, I mean, we heard from a number of veterans here today. This particular resolution- This particular resolution, albeit, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the other two sponsors of this resolution, but you really think about an outside entity coming in and conducting an assessment of exactly the level of services being provided to our veterans, and that would be one issue that would really stick out. So if the IG's office, Inspector General's office, were to step forward and identify that as an issue, then it would force the system to address it. That's what I'm sharing with you. Not necessarily perhaps the resolution, I know for a fact, based on the work that has been ongoing and some of the information that you provided, the resolution has to be clarified and make sure that it's factual in terms of reinforcing the current information, because we certainly don't want, or I certainly don't want to have my name at the top of a resolution presenting information that perhaps will be outdated. But I believe that with all the inspections that were conducted in VA programs nationwide, that Guam deserves to be added to that list, so that in fact, they can conduct an outside assessment, if the services are equivalent to what other jurisdictions are getting, the investment dollars to our veterans are equivalent to what other jurisdictions are getting, then at least our veterans would know that based on the resources that are being put forward throughout the veterans' system, in terms of medical treatment and services and benefits, that Guam is at the same level. If not, then that would give us even more reason and give Congresswoman Baudelaire even more tools and resources at her disposal to put in an additional argument, that our veterans in Guam, using a term that was used a little earlier, are not second-class veterans. Our veterans should be provided with the services, the medical treatment, and the benefits that each and every veteran across the nation has earned by virtue of donning the uniform. And as a fellow veteran, I'm sure that you certainly feel with, in regards to equity being applied across the board. So that's the purpose of the introduction of the resolution, is to see what we can do to make sure that we get an outside assessment as to the level of services and treatment and benefits that our veterans are receiving. And I want to thank some of our veterans who brought this up, and you may have alluded to it, we have good people working in the system, but perhaps there are some issues in the system that restricts their ability to be able to provide continuous care to our veterans as it applies to receiving benefits or as it applies to receiving medical treatment. So I will close with that particular comment, because I still believe very strongly that having a third, an outside entity come in and evaluate the system may provide the veteran community in Guam with additional resources and a tool to say, "We want equity here." If that evaluation says otherwise, that veterans in Guam, you are getting equivalent to, if not, additional resources being allocated to your veterans in the community of Guam, then our veteran community would understand that, and will continue to press, obviously, for improvement in the processes, but not necessarily perhaps addressing some of the other issues that are highlighted here. So let me close with that comment, and senators?
Senator, excuse me, let me just clarify one thing.
I have no doubt that the folks that are providing services up at Seabuck, up at the benefits office up at Tijana, and any other offices that have been stood up to provide services are doing the best that they can with the resources that they have. And while we've had veterans that have come up and said, "I've got no problem, you know, whenever I need to see somebody," well then, great, I'm really happy for them. But then, what do we do with guys like, and I'm not debating, I'm just now giving my perception, just the same way that everybody has had a chance to express their opinion. But what do we do with somebody like Mr. Cruz, who obviously has some very serious problems, and the kind of response that the system is giving to him? Or Mr. Saragosa, who now has gone, missed twice the six-month checkup because it's taken that long? What do we do with those guys? You know, so we can paint it as nicely as we want, but the fact is, we still got some fellow veterans who are not getting the attention that they need. And if in fact, you're saying that if, I hope you took the names then of the guys that came up here tonight and expressed the difficulties that they're having, and I hope that you can get their problems resolved then by the end of the week, otherwise, you know, I think we've got a system that needs looking at, and I think that's all that we're saying. Now, you know, this thing about having somebody else come into our house to take a look, well, guess what happened? When this thing got published, oh my goodness, all of a sudden nurses come falling out of the sky, you know, doctor gets shown up now, I don't know, I mean, we've seen that in the Army, when we know that an IG is coming, oh my goodness, things get cleaned up. I don't think anything's wrong with having an outside party come in, and that's not to say that the individuals who are here are not doing a good job, they're doing probably the best job that they can with the limited resources they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senators, any other statement or comment? If not, we're going to conclude this public hearing on Resolution 111-33. I want to thank all of our fellow veterans for not only tuning in, but also providing the testimony this evening, and the committee or the office will continue to receive testimony for the subsequent 10 days on this particular resolution, written testimony, and I appreciate everyone's attendance and attention tonight. Thank you very much.